Good evening. I'd like to call the City of Manassas Common Council meeting to order. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could we start out with the roll?
Alderman Kruger.
Here.
Alderman Tom Grotty.
Here.
Alderman Ted Grotty.
Here.
Alderman Repella.
Here.
Alderman Nichols.
Here.
Alderman Taylor.
Here.
Alderman Sevenik.
Here.
Alderman Langdon.
Here.
First item on the agenda this evening is the Minutes and Communications. Do we have a motion? Alderman Sevenik?
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'll move for that we receive Minutes A through K and Communications I through Q.
There's a motion, a second. Alderman Taylor?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to remove Personnel Committee. It does not reflect, nor does it have my discussion in paragraph five in there, so I can have the clerk redo that, and we'll have it next meeting.
So this is not approving the minutes? That would be in the Personnel Committee agenda. I believe we had a pers... No, we have, in the next Personnel Committee agenda, we will have the minutes to approve, so all that we're doing, these are placed on file until the finals are put there.
So you can do it in Personnel, he's saying.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Langdon?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to remove item, letter Q.
You can't remove, you can, if you have, do you want to discuss?
Yep.
Okay, that's fine, except we turned you off here for some reason. Let's turn the mic back on.
So I'd like to...
Do you have some questions?
Yep.
Okay, go ahead.
Oh, okay. So on letter Q, I just, I had an inkling, and, and so, after driving by it many times, going to therapy in Appleton, I had an inkling, so last week I called Director Schrader and asked him about it, and seeing that myself and one other Alderman were against TIF 14, I wanted to bring this to council's attention, so everybody knew that this is in default because it has not been started yet. Director Schrader, do you have anything to add to that?
The only thing I guess I would add is that, so we, there is a start date in there, that is, so that's anticipated, so leave time to finish. Obviously, the construction ending period is a really important one there, so that is just the end of the year, so we'll still be pushing the developer on that. They did construct a, the new Starbucks, the multi-tenant building out front in a three month period of time, so that was very quick, so it'd be interesting to see what they can do in the back in a short amount of time, but they have received this notice of default, and I, and I did have a conversation with them, and they are working through bids. They, they had to go up for rebid as well.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Grotty?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to bring up a few comments dealing with the Bazaar After Dark. I've been to quite a few of them, they are very magical events, but I'm a little distraught with the, the main thing with, well, one of the main elements of this event is to paint a mural, and everyone that I've gone to that have not been in Manassas, those projects has always been completed, every city that's done this. Now, we've had two murals, and this mural is based on an actual woman within and from our community, Gloria of the Morning, the princess and queen of the Winnebago, 1700s. So she was quite distinguished and well-merited and well-respected within the tribe, and these two murals that we have are all about her. We had one mural started, it was never completed, then they came back and said that for the second bazaar, we will do, the sec, we'll do another mural on top of this in time for the bazaar. They started that September 11th of last year, and that's where it ended, and then they came to us and said, "We will complete this mural before this next bazaar." Well, the weather permitting now, there's no way, and this mural has not changed since September of last year. These artists, which is very odd, have, and it's not our taxpayer money, have been paid in full, and two murals uncomplete within our city, which I just find it kind of demeaning. So, I don't know. So what's happening?
Both Director Schrader and I did have conversations with them. We were assured they would be complete, they haven't been, so it's going to be something that we are going to continue having, those discussions. I believe that the second artist no longer lives in the area, so I'm not sure exactly what will happen. There is not a mural as part of this...
This one.
...Bazaar After Dark, just because of the time of year, it wouldn't be possible to do so, but there will be some art as part of this Bazaar After Dark as well. So we will be doing something, because I agree with you, having an unfinished mural is not good, and I've reached out also to the owners of that building to discuss what we might want to do with that wall to, to have a finished appearance.
Okay, thank you.
I don't know if you have anything to add, Sam? No? Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Item F is public comments and any matter of concern to the city. Do we have anyone from the public who wishes to speak this evening? You're welcome to speak.
I'm Doug Bodway from Valley Marine, and I got a notice that you're going to proceed with something down there by us on the channel, and I just wanted to make a comment that without that property that I've been leasing for 35 years, and Valley Marine in itself has been doing it since 1950, it's really going to put a hardship on our business. Probably not going to be able to make it go, because we need all of that to keep things going. There's been an issue kind of in this memorandum, that there's been lease agreements and so forth. We never received the last ones from 2016, a notice of non-renewal. We got a bill for rent, which we paid in 2016, we've got one for 2017. We look back today after we got this notice, and no, we didn't receive one for this year. So, not realizing that that happened, I've been using the property, and, and we have to have it, to keep the business going. I don't know what type of resolve we can do with this, but I hope there is something that we can work with, that I can keep on doing it. And at some points, there is more boats there than other times, and that's just because of the time of the year. Right now, we're overloaded because of boats going to storage. In the spring, not everybody wants their boat out at the same time, so some, it, it isn't quite as bad as it is right now. We did encroach down towards where the old Coast Guard station was, just because we needed some room for a time. That stuff is all starting to go into storage now, so the amount of boats that are going to be out there is going to be a lot less now, but that doesn't mean that we need the, that we don't need the property. We really need it, and I've been watching since 2016, the amount of traffic that is going along there, the bicycle riders, the walkers and so forth, and the amount of people that come past our place is not very many. Most everybody goes down Broad Street, and from there, I don't know which way they go. There hasn't been an issue with parking, and that was one of the things in the original part, that they wanted, you, you wanted to take part of it and put parking in there. There isn't hardly any parking going on, on, on Broad Street, and I've been, I've been watching that to make sure that, you know, that I know what I'm talking about. So I don't know, in the long run, what we can do, but I hope that we can work something out where, at this point, you don't need to do that street. The street is in good shape, I don't know why you want to redo the street now and, and put a walking trail in there, because there, there's nobody using it. So I, I don't know what else to, to say, it's just that if you do decide to terminate the thing, if we could, if at all possible, to wait till the middle of next summer, when we don't need as much of the property as we do right now, that would be helpful, and then I'll have time to figure out what to do with it. So if anybody has any questions?
So we'll be discussing that later in the agenda, and then we can, if there's questions, we could ask you at that point.
Okay.
All right.
Thanks. Thank you.
Guys just here to watch?
Yeah.
Okay. So we'll move on to the consent agenda, then. There are six items this evening, the Common Council Minutes from October 21st, the Board of Public Works recommendations from October 21st for the payment to Northeast Asphalt of $124,605.81, the Personnel Committee recommendations for the Deputy Director of Engineering position salary grade to be changed from grade 13 to a grade 11, to replace the former vest incentive with a physical fitness incentive for all police management personnel, that Lieutenant Adam Schultz is credited with his years of service from the Onalaska Police Department for the purpose of determining his vacation time for the Personnel Policy Handbook, and a 3% wage increase with a 10% health insurance employee premium share for non-representative employees as included in the 2020 budget. Does anyone wish to have items separated this evening? Alderman Sevenik?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to have separated item two, payment to Northeast Asphalt, and item six, the 3% wage increase and the 10% insurance premium share.
Any others? Seeing no one else, could we have a motion for the remaining items? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'll, I'll move for the approval of the Common Council Minutes, item one. Item three, the Deputy Director of Engineering's grade change, the replacement of the vest incentive to a physical fitness incentive, and the credits to Lieutenant Adam Schultz as discussed in the Personnel Committee.
There's a motion, a second. If we could have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carried on, roll call eight zero.
Alderman Kruger?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make the motion to approve the payment for Northeast Asphalt Incorporated Contract Unit Number 2019-03, street reconstruction, various locations, in the amount of $124,605.81, payment number two.
There's a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carried on, roll call eight zero.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion for the 3% wage increase and a 10% health insurance employee premium share contribution for the non-representative employees as included in the 2020 budget.
There's a motion, a second. By Alderman Kruger, is there discussion?
Um, here, I would like to separate the 3% increase.
So you'd like to, you'd like to have two votes, yes. That's fine.
I didn't hear you.
That's fine.
Okay.
So the first, Alderman Repella?
Oh, you're fine. Alderman Taylor took care of what I was going to do, so thank you.
Okay. So the first motion, then, is to, to approve a 3% wage increase for the 2020 budget. Any discussion on that? Alderman Repella?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I'd like to, I know that the fire and the police got their wages increased, 3% seems to be a little high, higher than what they get paid, so I'd like to knock it down to 2.5 or 2.25.
You need to pick one.
I will pick 2.25.
Okay, is there a second?
I can say that one.
There's a motion, a second. Director Jacobs, could you fill us in on what the increases are for police and fire?
In my memo from two weeks ago, I might include it in there that the negotiated increase for the Police Officers Union Group was a 3% increase for 2020, and the Fire Department was a 2.25% increase for fire. They have a 1.75% increase in January, and they have a half a percent increase, I believe, in July, so it's a total bump up of a 2.25 for theirs. And in my memo, it also included where the US Department Labor comes out with their statistics every quarter, for the data that I'd included in my memo for June, the quarter ending June 2019, they had the data in there for state and local government employees, that they told compensation was a 3% for the 12-month period ending June 30th of 2019, and now with the numbers that did come out on October 31st, I did not update my memo, but I do have it here with me. The data for 12 months ending September 30th, 2019, was 3.1% for compensation, and for fringe benefits was 3.5%. So the wage increase that we have recommended is below what the national level is for state and local governments of 3.1, and our fringe benefits for our health insurance, when we get to that a little bit later, we're asking for a 3.2% increase, and the national average for state and local governments is 3.5. So we are below both of those for the 12-month period ending September 30th of this year.
Do you have anything else, Randy?
Uh, no, no, I didn't, that.
Alderman Sevenik?
Thank you, Mayor. As I had stated in the Personnel Committee, I feel personally that this is very generous, that the city is doing this, but I looked at what our staff has done over the year to kind of offset this cost, and that is with the insurance. They're taking a bigger bite in what they pay in their health insurance, and this time it's going to be up to 10%, which still is a small amount compared to a number of industries, but not necessarily in government, and so, but I appreciated that time and effort and work that was put in to do that, so I'll, I'm in favor of the 3% increase. Had that not been in there, I would have agreed with this motion, and so I do appreciate staff doing that.
Is there other discussion? Alderman Taylor?
Thank you, Mayor. I used to take a census, starting at the Racine Street Bridge, and go through all the factories along the river, and most of those are closed today, and, but I did check some of the larger employers in the city, and first of all, looking at the Consumer Price Index, which calculates inflation, we're at a 1.7% this year, this coming year, and looking at 15% of the population in Manassas who are over 65 years old, the Social Security cost of living for 2020 is 1.6%. Major employers, the highest number I found was 2% this year, with, or below that, below I sit on the Sewage Commission, Sewage Commission looks at the Consumer Price Index for their raises too, and I think the 3% is very generous, and as Alderman Sevenik said, with insurance, the large employers in the city have been paying a lot more than that throughout the years. The city's catching up to that, and with all these figures from the federal government that calculate this, this is twice as much as, as what the people are receiving, people on Social Security and other major employer, employers in the community. I second the 2.5, a little higher than I wanted, I thought maybe about 2, 2% because that was the tops I found for any of the big companies, but I guess I could live with that, but 3% is, how can we tell our people on Social Security that the city employees are getting twice as much as they're getting, and they're paying the bill? I just, it doesn't calculate, and we don't calculate these figures, the federal government presents them to us, and that's what we could live with, those numbers, and our numbers don't add up.
Alderman Repella?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I will echo James's comments about the, well, the Social Security increases, and also just the, the makeup of our city. We've got such a, uh, lower income in our city, we've got lots of free or reduced lunches in our city, and our city isn't that rich, and so 2.25 seems just about, just about right, as far as the pay raise goes. I've been working at this school district, a couple of them, and I haven't had a pay raise in my basketball coaching for four years, so it stayed stagnant, the, the teacher salaries haven't gone up either. So I will have a 3% raise, even though it's not too much, but, so I will stay with my 2.25%, and I appreciate the 10% health insurance, but I taught at a parochial school, we had to pay 50%. So 10%, 10% seems pretty darn good, so I wish I was getting that. Thank you.
Alderman Kruger?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Oh, I know that not all industries are just doing 2% or have been 3%, and actually a 3.5% increase in a particular industry that I'm aware of, and we have had city employees and employees' unions in the past that got 1% and a half percent, and a couple times 0%. We had a union reopen up their contracts twice because the city was in trouble, and lowered the increase that they were supposed to get. And I'm not one that believes that you should figure the wages of particular employees based on the surrounding community, as far as one job here is not less qualified or, or less important and should be paid less than someone over in NINA, just because of a particular demographic, that's something that we do have to work with. I mean, I'm in agreement with the 3%, again, as Alderman Sevenik said, they're making also a big concession on the, on the health insurance, and if we want to retain decent employees, we do have to keep up with, with the times. And John, I just have one question, with that pay increase, what is added onto the budget, if you just figured in just the pay increase?
On just the pay increase?
Correct.
Um, the pay increase was, with the 3% across the board, was $224,000. With the difference of the offset of the health insurance that the employees were willing to go up from the 7.5% to the 10%, that's a savings of $45,000, so the net effect is about $179,000.
Thank you.
And it's not all tax levy, it's all spread across all the different department funds.
Yeah, thank you.
So while you have your mic on, John, do you want to, we, we did calculate what the average increase would be for an average person on a weekly basis, and if you want to share?
We did. On, on an average employee, on a family insurance plan, if they're going to be having the increase in the health insurance, going from seven and a half to 10%, that's another $600 they would be out of pocketing annually for health insurance, and the Wisconsin retirement rate is also going up, that's something totally out of the employees' control, that's going up from 6.55 to 6.75, that's another $200 annually. So when you divide it by the biweekly paychecks, basically, on an average employee, we'd be making about $11 net pay additional every two weeks. Those that make a little bit more than the average could be about $27, so it's between, like, $11 and $27 more net pay biweekly per paycheck, based on the proposed 3% increase, but then also the shift of the health insurance from seven and a half to 10. The police union this year in 2019 is at 8%, so they're going from 8% to 10%, and then with the increase in the Wisconsin retirement, which is going up two tenths of a percent, with all that factored in, it's between, like, $11, $12 on an average employee, if they make a little more than the average, be about $27 more biweekly net pay.
Okay, thanks, John. Alderman Sevenik?
Thank you, Mayor. I, you know, this is always a touchy subject, because it's people's salary, and for some reason, people get pretty worked up about it, but I hope that, and I totally respect what Alderman Taylor has said and Alderman Repella, everything they said up here is absolutely true, and everything that Alderman Kruger said is also true. Maybe in the future, we have to look at this maybe a little different. You brought up net pay, that's an interesting subject, because we have a number of people that work here in the city that are making more than $90,000 a year. 3% of $90,000 is a lot different than someone making $40,000, okay? So maybe that's something we need to look at. Another thing that has been thrown out there in the past, and I don't care how you feel about it, I'm a Manassas boy, I've lived here my whole life, I think that those who work for the city, who have taken the steps to choose to live in this city, should also get paid more than those who have not, because they are paying our taxes. And so I, for those of you who have chosen to make Manassas your community, thank you very much, I appreciate that, and maybe that's something we might need to look at into the future also, but like I said again, this is always touchy, and I think what we have done in the Personnel Committee and what's been recommended, it is fair, and I will be voting for the 3% and the 10% shared.
Alderman Taylor?
Thank you, Mayor. In 2017, the median household income in Manassas was $50,699, which is lower than the CSE median income of $61,930, so, you know, Manassas is far below the stand, the other standards in the, around the country, and I'll be knocking on doors for reelection this year, and it was always the Social Security people would say to me, "This is all we got this year, and you get this, why is that?" Well, now I'm on the Social Security bandwagon, and I see where these numbers come from, and these are, these are the top people in the country that come up with this Consumer Price Index, and the Social Security cost of living, which reflects the Consumer Price Index of 1.7, 1.6 for Social Security. And I don't know how you can face people by seeing this is what you should be getting, and that we're going to double that. I don't care what concessions people have taken in the past, it's always been quid pro quo in this city, you always get something for something you give up. Company I worked for, the last five years, the union's got, we didn't get anything, and the management for the last eight years of Graphic Packaging, they didn't get any raise either, so you got to look at the real world compared to where we're at, and I'm sure a good businessman like Doug here today could tell us the, the price of boats, and how they've gone up, and compare it to the cost of living too. So it's, it's something, we should be looking at these numbers, and responsibly, the, as the Sewage Commission does, they look at the cost, the Consumer Price Index, and that's what they follow, and that's what And that's what they follow, and that's what social security follows too. So the customer is the people in the city. And they're not getting a 3% raise. And I think the real number is around 2% would be very generous this year.
Alderman Langdon.
Thank you, Mayor. I think that for this vote, that the people that voted for this back in Personnel should vote for it tonight, and the people that voted against it in Personnel should vote against it tonight. We made the vote and we forwarded it to council. And I voted for it. So I cannot all of a sudden make a change and decide I'm not going to vote for it. I did talk to my wife, and yeah, she works in the private sector. But I hear, and I'm going to say this because we hear over and over, which is true. I think it's true everywhere, private, public. But I hear over and over about we have to pay to retain. Well, my wife has a degree. So she also, I think, is in the same boat that you can make a comment with her also. She has, you know, she works in accounting and she has a degree. But next year, you know, we look at this. And I'll take a harder look at it because this past year, she only got 1%. And so, but like I said, I think the ones who voted for it should vote for it tonight, and the ones who voted against it should vote against it still. Thank you.
Alderman Grati.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to state my little opinions here and knowledge of the private sector versus the public. First of all, we got to compare apples to apples here. And I think with them taking the 10% health insurance reduction, it offsets the 3% wage increase. I mean, health insurance is very expensive, and it really hits in the pocketbook. And you look at our people in the city, and I'll take the Public Works Department as an example. We lost a director. Did we hire another one for a hundred and some thousand? No, we promoted within, saved the city some money, doing the things. We have good people. They're creative. They know what they want. They work with the council, and we work with them. So I think this is very doable, the 3%.
Alderman Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor. Just one last comment. My correction tonight for Personnel Committee, which will come when the Personnel Committee reconvenes, there was no discussion in Personnel. It was rushed through. I was the only one that was reflecting what social security was getting that evening. And there's no other discussion listed in the Personnel Committee. So this wasn't heavily debated. It was rushed, it was just rushed through with no debate except for mine.
Alderman Sonek. I'm just going to take exception to that because the reason, as I stated earlier, I stated in the Personnel Committee, that's why I wasted council's time so it would be on the record. And that was, the reason I supported the 3% was because this time, the staff at the city went ahead and worked very hard to find a solution to our health insurance crisis, really. And they stepped up with 10%. This is what I said in committee. It may not reflect it in the minutes. Maybe they need to be a little more verbatim. But I did state that. And that's a $45,000 savings. So I'm happy with that. To me, that $45,000 is probably the 2.25%.
Okay, seeing no further discussion, we have a separated motion. So this motion is just the 3% wage increase? I mean, 2.25. Sorry. So right now, we are, we are on the amendment for the wage increase. So there is a motion to amend to 2.5. So first, we separated, and then we amended it. So right now, the motion is to...
amend the 3%.
Well, the motion is to approve a 3% wage increase. And then there's amendment on the floor to amend, yes, to 2.25. Okay. So this is to amend at this point. We could have a roll call vote, please.
Motion fails on roll call, 2-6.
Alderman Taylor.
Mayor, I'll make an amendment that we have a 2.3% increase.
Is there a second? Seeing no second. So motion in a second? 2.3%. Seeing no further discussion. If we could have a roll call vote, please.
Motion fails on roll call, 2-6.
So we're back to the original motion now for a 3% wage increase? And seeing no further discussion. If we could have a roll call vote on that, please. It's separated, yes. Just make a separate motion for a 3 point, and then we'll vote on the other one.
Okay.
There we go. Okay, if we could have a roll call vote on that, please.
Motion carried on roll call, 6-2.
And then the other half of the motion is the 10% contribution to the health insurance. And we'll use this, you can just use this motion. Okay. Is there any discussion on that? Seeing none, if we could take a roll call vote then, please.
Motion carried on roll call, 8-0.
Okay, item I is the action items. And our first item is the accounts payable and payroll for October 24th through 31st. Is there a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the accounts payable and payroll for the term of October 24th through October 31st, 2019, in the amount of $1,085,603.72.
It's a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please. Miss Beckett, yours did not register, it looks like. Oh, that would be why.
Motion carried on roll call, 8-0.
So item two is the beverage operators license applications. Is there a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move to approve the beverage operators license applications for the 2019 through 2021 licensing period as listed under approved on the clerk's memo dated October 31st, 2019.
It's a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carried on roll call, 8-0.
Item three is the Main Street Racine, Main Street and Racine Street Roundabout. Item, Alderman Kruger, we'll get there.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make the motion to approve the Main Street and Racine Street Roundabout landscape design and to have it forwarded onto the Wisconsin Department of Transportation.
Is there a second?
Second.
So motion in a second by Alderman Langdon. Alderman Sevanik?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to go on record that I do not want this to be a plain roundabout. I'm still hoping that we just don't have some circle down there, that we add some type of an amenity to the roundabout, such as downtown Manasha or something to that effect. So I just want to go on record. This way, it's video recorded so that the minutes don't always reflect what you say or whatever. So what we have here is basically your basics. The plantings and a roundabout and that. So hopefully, staff will come back with something nicer.
Alderman Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor. I too want to go on record as seeing that the centerpiece of the roundabout, and I'm glad that the mayor brought this up last meeting, and so did Director Alex, that if we wait till the state puts it in, then we can put what we want in the center of that roundabout. And I think at that time, it'd really be fun for the community to have some sort of a contest and put it out there to everybody what they would like to see in the center of that, of that roundabout. So it'd be a fun project for the community. We've all been over at Butelemore Junior High School throughout this process for the last four, five years. And the drawings I saw and what they talked about was with the roundabout at the north side of the Racine Street Bridge, where currently the North Star office building is located and Dr. Larson's building, that building will be removed, and the roundabout will be taken up, part of that tract of land there. And what the residents in the Headwaters condominium project and the other residents to the east of this project asked for there to be some high screening to block the headlights of the cars as they're going around the roundabout to... When you're going south on Racine Street, you won't be able to turn on Broad Street. You have to go down through the roundabout and then come back and then turn to go east on Broad Street. So all these extra cars are going to be, their lights are going to be hitting the side of the condominiums and the shoreline to the east of this intersection. And I thought we were pretty much guaranteed that there would be a burn or a screening effect that would prevent these headlights from shining on these people on their home, actually, in their living rooms on the waterfront side of the Headwaters condominiums. So Director Alex, did you see, I know you're just coming into this process here. You're brand new to us in the last month or two here. So have you seen anything with the state on this?
I can say that I did not. I know that you make mention, I know that the roundabout itself in the center is raised up just for that, then too for traffic, for the lights. I can certainly, obviously, we have some time before we actually forward this to the DOT, and I can reach out to Bill. Matter of fact, I'll be seeing him tomorrow from the DOT. And we can talk a little bit about it. Just so you're aware, we did note on the new drawing, the coral forester grass that will get a little bit taller. But there again, it's not, you know, going to be a dense screening effect. But just so you're aware, that would be a little bit taller. But I can talk to Bill and raise that concern with him or see what he recalls from earlier meetings.
So would it be best for us to postpone this tonight? If we have that time?
There again, depending upon, because what we're looking at here is the concept design. So if we're looking for natural screening, that's something that maybe we can have some control afterwards because we're doing the planting. As far as physical screening of some sort, I'm not quite sure how we would do that because of the elevation change. And that's why we showed you that 3D modeling. And I'm, that might be a bit of a challenge there, so.
And early on, it was the DOT that was saying we'll have this burned area because you can definitely see the impact on these, these housing with this roundabout. I mean, the headlights are going to be right in their, literally in their living room.
Well, it's your guys' call. If you don't want to, you know, approve it tonight, then obviously...
I'm just asking you what the timetable is here.
Well, again, they would like it by November 8th. I mean, if we put it off two weeks, will it kill them? I would like to think that they would work around it. I mean, we can certainly raise that question.
Because if we approve this tonight, we're seeing, yeah, this is okay. This is what we want.
Correct, as far as the landscape design. Again, if it's plantings, if it's something that we're going to try and screen with plantings, again, that's something that would be, we're going to plant after the fact. I'm just not sure that's going to, you know, I guess remedy the situation or concern now that you say that, so.
And I don't know about what plantings would stop those headlights from shining in their homes. But it was brought up many times, that factor. Just like with a parking lot, you know, if we put in a parking lot, we don't let the headlights shine into people's homes, you know. We have some sort of a burning or a landscape design that would prevent that. And certainly, this was talked about many times in the last five years with this process. And I really think it should be addressed.
Okay.
So if we make this recommendation tonight like this is, do we lose control of this piece? Do they say, okay, this is what the city said, and we're going to live with this?
Again, I guess I'm at a loss as to what we would do to provide adequate screening. So if you guys want to hold out, that's fine. I mean, what's two more weeks? I think that would be okay.
Okay. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to hold this until the November 18th meeting.
Deputy Director Gordon. Alderman Taylor, on the screening for that building, there is a grade change from the road down to the base of that building.
I know there is.
The other thing that you're going to lose part of that is the view shed that you would have of the water and things of that nature.
That's why I want to back up and go to the state here because, you know, you guys are coming in on this late. And I just want to make sure we get this right going forward. We have people that pay tremendous property taxes there. And I want to make sure we get this right. And if it's okay, you said two weeks. There is a motion on the floor, Mayor.
I don't believe there was a second at this point. Is there a second? Seeing no second, the motion fails.
Guess we don't care about the citizens, then?
So we do have a motion to approve on the table. Seeing no further discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carried on roll call seven one.
We're done with that item at this point.
If you would still call Mr. Bertrand and let's bring this up to him. Okay, thank you.
Item four is the health insurance renewal. Do we need an explanation before we go to the motion? Or is it, is it significant? Alderman Grady.
I'll start off with making the motion for the 2020 health insurance renewal. But I'd like to have Director Jacobs elaborate a little bit on this.
As you remember from the discussion we had two weeks ago from personal committee, there was one proposal that came in the best that we felt through WEA, which is the 3.2% increase. It also has a second year rate cap of depending on where our loss ratio is, if anywhere from a 5.5 not to exceed 8% or 11 and a half percent. So that, those are good things at least to have from this provider. This was a plan that we also had, had WEA back all, 2014 was the last year that we had them as our provider. What came in then following that package that you had two weeks ago was there was an alternate plan for an additional reduction in the premium of 6.89%. However, it was structured as a design plan towards prescription drugs that would be not at hitting the deductible, or I'm sorry, at the copay level of 0, 10, 25, 50 per prescription, but hitting at the market rate, hitting the deductible first. So that those individuals that had a number of prescriptions that were especially in tier two, three, and four would be all hitting at the market rates. So what Candy Huber and I from the HR department had done is we tried to run a couple of different scenarios for the employee health insurance committee just to see once kind of where that break even point was. Where does it make sense for an, for an employee to stick with what we are labeling that 3.2% is option A. The other alternate reduction would be option B or C, depending if you were nonrepresented or police union, is how we had labeled it. What we determined, what we identified was that for any employees that have a monthly prescriptions at market cost that were more than $69 a month, they were going to be out of pocketing significantly more dollars if going to this alternate lower premium because they were having prescriptions that were being paid at market rate and also bleeding through the deductible first and also through the employer's HRA matching funding. We've also determined that for the police union officers, that the dollar amount for a family plan would be if they were more than $28 for prescriptions in a month, it would not make sense for them to also not to choose option B or C, the lower premium option, for that same reason on the deductible side, before it would actually hit then the copay level once the deductible was fully met by the employee share and the employer's HRA share. But we did discuss this with the employment insurance committee and we did determine for some individuals, there is an additional savings for them if they are a non-user or very low user on very low prescriptions for that other option. So we felt having, and we had discussed this with the committee a number of months, having a dual option, having a choice available for some employees would be a wise choice for we, the employer, the city of Manasha, to offer the employees. So that there are a number of employees, it might only be a handful, but there would be some savings that the employee could receive and also the employer could receive for that alternate option. So our recommendation is to offer both as a dual choice plan. We believe probably maybe 80 to 90% would choose option A with the 3.2% increase. And that would be funded both at the 10% level for employees and 90% for the employer. However, with the alternate option, with the amount, the significant amount of prescriptions that could be flowing through that alternate option, we were proposing a seven and a half percent employee contribution share instead of 10% for the nonrepresented employees. So that was the recommendation that came out of the employee insurance, health insurance committee here last week.
So I'm not sure, Ted, did you make the motion? Or, okay, so you made the motion to approve as in the memo? And was, and there's a second from Alderman Kruger. Is there discussion? No discussion? So as described in the memo?
Okay.
With the two options, basically. Okay. Seeing no further discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carried on roll call eight zero.
Alderman Sevigny.
Thank you, Mayor. Item five is the amendment for the real estate listing.
Yes.
I'll make a motion at this time that the, we approve the listing contract amendment between the city of Manasha and Pfeiffer Lee as recommended by city staff.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Do you have discussion to stand?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. No discussion. Everyone seems to be reading. So, no discussion. If we could have a roll call vote then, please. Yeah, you, the, the thing is, we already voted. So we can't really have discussion. I don't think there's a rule.
Shown the vote. We don't know what the vote is.
Okay. But since, since people have the ability to change their vote yet after your, your comment, that's fine.
That's right. Can you, Samuel, can you answer that question?
Sure. So looking at the listing agreement, we did bring that up with our, our realtors. So there is no minimum commission on these lots, as well as they, we kind of explained that scenario to them and they, they stated they would not charge us anything. So typically if there would have been a minimum commission, let's say $2,500, we would have had to pay that per lot. So we, we do not have that on these listing contracts.
Okay, thank you.
Seeing now everyone's going to change their vote.
Okay. So you have the opportunity to change your vote now if you wish. And seeing, seeing, seeing everyone has voted, we'll move forward. Yes.
Motion carried on roll call eight zero.
Item six is the Valley Marine Mart. Alderman Sevigny.
I am going to try to tackle this. The, the city has a position that we're pretty much done with having this lease. But my person, this is my personal feeling, anyone else wants to do what they want. I think we should continue the lease and at least till the end of June 1st of 2020, seeing that the boats are there ready and that, that you should come in and, and pay whatever the rental we had last year plus 3%. So that'll be my motion.
Second that.
Do we need to bring a lease, a license back to the council at the next meeting? Or can we do that just as a motion like that?
You can do it on a simple motion there.
Okay. I just want to make sure that the attorney was good with that. Alderman Grady.
Yes, thank you. When Doug did get up and talk about the agreement and the notice and the lease that, he said he did pay, but he was never notified of anything for 2018. Is, is that something where the city dropped the ball here? Or is this some type of an ongoing thing that?
The lease was not renewed. I guess what we didn't do is we didn't tell him that he should not have any votes on it. Oh, apparently the attorney did tell him that it was, did you want to speak to him? I don't want to put words in your mouth.
Right. It's curious this.
There was a letter that went out indicating that the license had expired and he was expected to remove. And that, all of the boats or whatever he had on there. And I want to say that was two years ago.
Yes.
So there has not been anything in writing for the last two years. My understanding was that on accident, an invoice did go out because they're kind of generated to go out. So it went out the one year and it was paid. But we had notified finance that, you know, there wasn't anything in place. And so nothing went out this year for 2019.
2019, okay.
So there hasn't been nothing paid in 19. And there, well, that would have been from 18 to 19, I guess, because as I recall, does it run on a, it's not on a calendar year.
Like a July to July or something like that.
Something like that. And so that's where we are now. It had been licensed by the year. So I want to say that was a couple of years, maybe it was.
Would July one be a better date than June one? Then if, if it's all right, I, if it's okay with you, I think July 1st would be better than June 1st. I thought it was June for some reason.
I think that is, I think you're correct, that it begins July 1st and ends like June 30th.
Okay. Can I, can I ask?
Sure.
Doug a question?
I'll, I'll ask for your name, Mr. Sintalau.
Okay. I don't know if you want to come up to the microphone, Doug. The attorney just stated that you did receive some type of notification. Did you? Are you aware of this? Or is this?
No, we never received anything. I received a bill for the lease or whatever you want to call it, for last year. And we paid it.
2018.
Yeah. And this year we, we, my wife looked back and we didn't receive anything for this year. But that got overlooked because of the summer. So I have to apologize for that. But I was not notified that we had to vacate the property.
And, and any of these leases, they're probably year to year or anything. Did it dawn on you to say, hey, maybe I should call the city? Hey, I didn't get nothing for this year. What's going on?
Well, yeah, now it does. But at that point, you're working.
No, I know that. But if it's a big part of your business and you need that space, you want to make sure you can keep that space too. You know, but, okay. That's the only question I really have about notification. So I don't know if anybody has any other ones for.
Yeah, Doug, also too, we had several meetings up here for plans for Water Street. Your whole neighborhood, including your business, was invited to attend those. So you must have an idea of what the future plans for that area. Okay, I just want to make sure. All right. So if it's okay, Mayor, I, I think the date should be July instead of June that I stated. And you don't need an extra amendment for that.
It doesn't make any difference to me if it's June or July.
But with the understanding that we're more than likely not going to be renewing after that.
Alderman Kruger. I think, Mayor, I guess I'm comfortable with that motion except, and I admit that the thing that bothers me the most is that you extended on the property you never should have been on anyhow. You extended the, on the property you weren't even leasing to begin with. You approached on it. I mean, the only way I could, that I, I mean. Is a 3% is, is a. Okay, I don't know if that was a, a serious or if that was just a joke over that. Okay. All right. And that is to be paid immediately, the whole installment?
We'll get an agreement together and it probably won't be tomorrow, but it will be before the next council meeting, hopefully.
Okay. So if I, if I.
No, no. But I want to make sure that there's a deadline that we get this done, that it doesn't drag on for three months.
I would like to make an amendment that this gets taken care of, that he comes down to City Hall and gets it taken care of by November 10th.
When is November 10th?
Sunday.
Sunday. Okay.
Then November 8th.
See, by this Friday?
Yep.
Is that doable, Attorney Captain? Sure. I just want to make sure it's doable. So we need. Okay, there's a motion, a second for the amendment. Discussion on the amendment. James, did you have discussion on the amendment? All, yep. All those in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Alderman Taylor.
I'd like the original motion. It's changed twice now and I think there was an extra 3% put on or something. So I would like the.
That was part of my motion.
It was, but then I heard there was another 3% put on. So I would like to have the motion read.
Attorney Captain.
And thank you because I just wanted to clarify as well. It would be to continue the license, paying for the current year, correct? So that would be July to July and then at the, whatever the rate was. And then there would be a 3% added for this year to 2020.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So, no.
Thank you.
Alderman Nichols.
Thank you, Mayor. I would also like to offer an amendment and that it be the final license. The last and final license for that property.
So the attorney did note that that would be up to a future council, but it could have language that says this is a single year. Go ahead.
I think it's had that language in for a few years, that this is the final. There is some language in that regard.
Okay.
This is the final, final.
Want to be sure that that's covered.
We, we could add another final.
Thank you.
So for the council's information, we are looking at the state grant program for road construction that was put in the budget this year as this street being one of those potential grants that we might look at. So that may expedite that process if we should get that. I'm not sure if we are going to rank high in that rating or not, but just so you know, we are still looking to try to get that project moved forward a little bit. Alderman Repella.
Thank you, Mayor. I know Alderman Nichols had her amendment and I'm going to, if I can make another amendment, I don't know if I can. But in further that, I know that she wanted this to be like his last, last, last hurrah. I'm not willing to go that far, but I would like it to be as long as he's in charge of the Valley Marine Mart, he owns it, he has it, he can still keep, continue using it and paying for rent. And if he decides to sell the land, decides to not be the, the major man there, then the agreement is ended. So.
So you're making, your, your attempt is to make this a multi-year lease for as long as he owns the property?
Well, it kind of does, but I don't know when Water Street's going to be developed. It might not be developed for another 20 years. I mean, we're going to.
So now if the council next year decides they want to continue leasing that, they can bring that up again next year.
Okay. Oh, okay. You wanted the year, okay, year to year then. Okay. All right.
If the council decides they don't. And I guess the, the biggest issue that we were wondering about is we don't set the budget till November.
Right.
And we want to make sure that if we do a project, that in April, there are no boats parked there. Because we need to start the project. So that's why we terminated the lease earlier because typically the boats would be there longer than April. because typically, the boats would be there longer than April. And if we can't start the project early, we may have to pay additional funding, additional costs for that project, because we can't start it early in the spring.
Okay.
So that's why our concern was not necessarily that next year, we're not starting the project in 2020, but in 2021, we might, and once those boats get parked there, it makes it difficult to start those projects.
All right, then I'll withdraw my amendment if I can.
You didn't really make an amendment.
I did make one, okay.
So there was no second on it, so we're good.
All right, thank you.
Alderman Nichols.
Thank you, I do have one more question for the city attorney, and that is whether or not through that license process that conditions can be placed on the amount of land of city property used for the storage of boats and the maintenance of that property.
And that is correct, that already is in there.
Okay, thank you.
Seeing no further discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please. This is Stan's motion to, to continue. Yes, but it's July, not June.
July.
July 1 to July, oh, actually, June 30th through July 1.
Do you want that on there?
That's fine. So this should be July 30th, I mean, June 30th, and this should be July 1.
Oh, this is his motion right here.
Oh, until July, yeah. Stan, do you want it to end July 1, or to start July 1? Typically, you would start it July 1, and then it'd run through June 30th.
What I'm saying is that it started July 1 of 2019.
Would be June 30th, then, of 2020. To make it a year. There we go. Perfect. Okay, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carried on roll call eight zero.
Item seven is a modification of the rules of the common council. Is there a motion? Alderman Langdon.
Thank you, Mayor, I'll make the motion for the modification to the rules of the common council, and the mayor is recommended by the ad hoc accountability of elected officials committee. This, we will need a two-thirds vote.
There's a motion and a second, is there discussion? Seeing no discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please. It's, it's under item. One. Up, Mark, you need to vote.
Motion carried on roll call eight zero.
Okay, next item is the protocol committee. Is there a motion? Alderman Kruger.
Thank you, Mayor, I'll make the motion to approve O-25-19 in ordinance amending Title II, Chapter II, Section 2-2-5 of the Code of Ordinance, Standing Committee's Action of Committee Reports, introduced by Alderman Kruger, recommended by ad hoc accountability of elected officials commission.
There's a motion and a second, is there any discussion?
In here, is this just pertaining to this particular part? Because it's not really saying what else the protocol committee's about. In other words, really, the protocol committee was also established to establish the rules, especially if we needed to change rules that were not in Robert's rules. City Attorney?
No, I had to turn mine on. It says shall make. Shall be responsible to make recommendations of protocol and rules of order to the common council. That's what you're looking for, right?
Okay.
As well as unresolved complaints.
And rules of the order of the common council, all right, thank you.
Sure. It's a nice run-on sentence, like I like to write. Okay, so seeing no further discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please. Ted? Uh-oh, you can't, it won't let you, oh, there you go.
Motion carried on roll call eight zero.
And item two is a resolution authorizing temporary borrowing with the Manasha Joint School District. Do we have a motion? Alderman Sevigny.
Thank you, Mayor, I'll move for R-2319.
Is there a second? There's a motion and a second by Alderman Ed Grady. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carried on roll call eight zero.
Item M is public comments, any matter that was listed on the agenda? I don't think Dave's wanting to make comments, it doesn't look like, so. Do we have a motion to adjourn? There's a motion and a second, all those in favor? All right, we are adjourned, thank you.